Yeah, but we could have Rob Bell Jenny.
Here.
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 Mrs. Stein.
Here.
Mr. Conrady.
Here.
And Mrs. Bohan.
Here.
Um, now since, uh, since I've been on the job, Frances Bohan has been president and in her role, she's called the meeting to order each time that I've been here and called on someone else to lead us in the saying of the pledge. I'm gonna turn things around since I get to call the meeting to order Frances and ask if you would please join us in the saying of the pledge.
I'll pledge allegiance to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I think our next item then is, uh, we have the oath of office for a newly elected board member.
So, Bill and Dale, would you stand? Raise your right hand. And repeat that name, please. So, a client, please state your name.
I, Dale Yekitis.
Having been elected.
Having been elected.
To the office of school board member.
To the office of school board member.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
The Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome to the board.
Some of those phrases are kinda long for an old guy to remember. Guy's my age.
All right, the next item on, on the agenda is the election of officers. Uh, Wisconsin State's statute 120.14 print one requires that a unified school district annually elect from its membership the following officers: school board president, school board vice president, school district treasurer, and school district clerk. This is an action item. Um, and the process begins with, uh, the election of the position of president.
Okay, so we have those really nice fancy ballots from the first ballot, so the nomination ballot will be distributed to the office of president. Frances Bohan. Frances Bohan. Dale Yekitis. Frances Bohan. Mark Marry. And Frances Bohan. So we'll go back to those, throw another nomination ballot for the office of president. Yeah, for president, we have Frances Bohan. Frances Bohan. Frances Bohan. Frances Bohan. Mark Marry. And Dale Yekitis. So we will try that.
Yeah.
Frances. 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 Mark. Frances. And Frances Bohan. Between Frances and Mark, we will vote for the office of president. Okay, for the office of president. Frances. Mark. Frances. 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 And Frances. Frances, you're president.
And I think with that, we will hand the gavel over to the, uh, board president.
And she's standing. The next nomination ballot will be to a candidate for the office of vice president. What is president's? Mark Marry. Mark Marry. Mark Marry. Dale Yekitis. Dale Yekitis. Dale. So between Dale and Mark for the office of vice president.
Is that your vote?
Okay, for the office of vice president, we have Dale. 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 Mark. And Mark. So Dale is our vice president. Okay, nomination ballot for the office of treasurer.
Stuck together, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
For a candidate for the office of treasurer, we have Mark Marry. Mark Marry. Karen. Mark. Mark. And Mark. So between Mark and Karen for the office of treasurer.
I don't understand why we're voting so... We had a majority, we had a majority. I don't understand why we're continuing to vote.
You had a nomination.
You had a nomination ballot.
We have to, we have to have them, okay, got it.
But a manual nomination.
Okay, you have to go and then, okay, okay.
So for the office of treasurer, we have Karen. Mark. 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 So Mark is our treasurer. Nomination ballot for the office of clerk. All right, nomination ballot for the office of clerk. Sam. Karen. Sam. 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 And Karen. So between Karen and Sam for the office of clerk. The office clerk. Sam. Karen. Sam. Karen. And Sam. Sam, you're our clerk.
Practice your autograph.
I know. I've watched you over this year.
And, um, Jenny is always professional, but that brings us right into the next topic on the agenda, which is a selection of school board secretary who need not be a member of the board, which is the role that Jenny Hagan has been fulfilling. So do I have a motion, um, to nominate someone for the position of school board secretary?
I move that Jenny Hagan is the board secretary.
Second.
You second. Any discussion? Okay, then will you take the vote?
Sure. Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And, uh, next we have the consent agenda. Approval of minutes from the special meeting held on April 8th, 2019. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mark and Sam. Any discussion? Then we'll go ahead and take the vote.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Abstain.
Dr. Sitwala?
Abstain.
And next we have, um, approval of minutes from the regular meeting held on April 10th of 2019. Is there a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Sam and Mark. Any discussion? Then we'll go ahead and take the vote.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Abstain.
Dr. Sitwala?
Abstain.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Okay, then we have approval of accounts for the month of April. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Dale. Then we'll go ahead and take the vote.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any, uh, communications?
I did not receive any questions.
We do have a correspondence file and I'll go ahead and pass that. And, um, any announcements?
Uh, yes, we do. Yes, we have a very important announcement. We wanna take this opportunity to extend our, our great appreciation to our entire teaching staff across the entire school district as this is National Teacher Appreciation Week, and, uh, yesterday was National Teacher Appreciation Day. So, on behalf of, of the board, our entire administrative team, we again just wanna extend a big thank you to our entire teaching staff. Thank you.
Everybody on the board I know echoes that because, uh, that's where the rubber meets the road and that's where the kids learn and that's where, um, people connect. So, thank you so much. And next we have the, uh, recognitions. The first one on the list is the Smart Team Research Group.
And I think Amy Fassler's here.
And I'm kinda representing all my students because it's AP testing week. Uh, and they're all pretty busy. So, this is probably the only time I've worked for us, I'll just take a minute, uh, to boost them. Um, I really just wanted my students to be recognized and, um, thank you for also the support that the school board and the district in general gives us. So, very quickly, um, our research group, um, works with the Milwaukee School of Engineering. Um, we are one of, um, probably about 20 smart teams, um, throughout the country, um, that work with a mentor. Our mentor this year was at UW Madison. Um, we worked, worked with a, um, cell membrane protein, an integrin protein that, um, works with the pathway to, um, um, impact inner ocular fluid in the eye, um, and damage to the optic nerve that leads to glaucoma. So the students sort of tell the story of this protein, um, and then they use computer software to model it, um, and the school of, Milwaukee School of Engineering prints the 3D model of their protein for them. And then if you wanna go to the next slide, I just have a couple. Um, they, um, my students at, um, this year, we had a team of six. Um, I have four rising freshmen that will be, um, heading off to school next year. Kyle Schrute's, um, going to the University of Minnesota, majoring in biochemistry. Um, Nikita Ganaguta going to UW Madison, um, neurobiology, pre-med. Um, Sue Husbod is attending Harvard University and think path in physics. I hear a lot of different ideas. Um, and Hugh Steiner, um, economics and biochemistry at UW Madison. Um, two of the returning researchers are Ariel Fernandez and Tara Bot. And then the students actually get to go and present their research, um, at, at the Experimental Biology Conference, which was in Orlando this year. Um, so there they are, the, um, smart teams that are able to attend and present at the research conference are part of an undergraduate poster session. Um, they are able to, um, attend that international conference and, so they heard fabulous lectures on cancer research and cryotherapy. Um, they have another presentation coming up, um, next week at the Science on Tap, um, at Up and Above the Pub. Um, this is our third year that we'll be presenting there, um, to wrap up the, um, science lecture series. So if you'd like to join us, we encourage you. You can come a little early and get something to eat. Um, and then they have a noon, um, lunch and research, uh, our presentation at the research home. So thanks a lot for, um, letting us take this opportunity to recognize the outstanding work that they do. The mentor that they worked with at UW Madison said she has graduate students that didn't understand some of the pathways that they, it's, they worked very, very hard. And then there's a copy of the poster that they did and their, their protein is in the center here, so this is what their 3D protein looks like. Thank you very much.
Amy, how many years have you been doing the research?
This is our seventh year. Eight years, yeah. All of a sudden, they kinda start adding up very quickly.
Thank you so much because you made it possible and this was your brainchild back then at the beginning.
Well, I, the MSOE trains teachers to run the program side and they're training it. Yeah, it's great.
Thank you. And that's one of the teachers we get to recognize during teacher appreciation. And then, um, next we have the Marshfield High School Gymnastics Program.
Well, we did have them listed, but we had a change in programming that they were not able to make it, I believe, correct? So.
Okay, so another time we will have to do that?
We're gonna try again next month, so.
We'll have to clear space for demonstration.
It could be fun, wouldn't it?
Okay, then we will move on to, um, staff reports and Dr. Christiansen.
Well, the, I've got, I've got some items to review here. The begin, beginning one, our first item is, uh, on the order of another recognition. We want, did wanna take some time to speak to, um, our students' recent participation in Science Bowl. Uh, 64 regional high school winners attended the Department of Energy National Science Bowl in Washington DC back in April, just a short while ago, and that, of course, included our very own Marshfield High School team. Uh, three of the Marshfield High School team's games went down to the very last question. Unfortunately, the Tiger team came up short on two of them. Uh, they ended up, they, uh, ended the day with a four and three record, uh, but failed to advance to the 16-team double elimination bracket. Um, a Midwest team, uh, did prevail though. It's my understanding that Wayzata, Minnesota, I believe, went on to win the high school division. Uh, in addition to academic competition, students had the opportunity to attend presentations by well-known scientists on current topics in math and the sciences. They also had time for a night tour of the monuments in Washington DC as well as a day tour to explore the many monuments, um, including the, the National Mall. Um, some of these names are gonna be, are gonna be familiar to what we just spoke to with Amy's presentation, but we do wanna recognize team members Davis Renz, Tara Bot, Hugh Steiner, Sue Husbod, uh, Carter, and Carter Chinaki, and then of course, our two coaches, Dean McFarland and Paula Herter. So again, a big congratulations to, um, our, our Marshfield Tiger team on the Science Bowl competition. Um, we did wanna take a, a moment to recognize that our international program, um, just wrapped up today, a elementary school camp. We had some visitors from China here. Um, Lincoln and Madison Elementary Schools have been hosting fourth and fifth grade students from China. The Chinese students were paired with an American buddy and have been attending classes during the day and experiencing American culture and activities in the evening. Um, the program was a, a great success and a great cultural experience for everybody that was involved and, and again, today that program came to a close. I see Tiffany is here, one of the principals that's been working with hosting, I believe, wrapped up today and the students are on their way back home, correct?
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning.
Yes, all done. Really fine.
All right, but, but we really thank the staff and our administration at both Lincoln and Madison Elementary Schools for hosting the Chinese students, uh, for the, for this camp. And then finally, I've got a rundown of upcoming events. Um, May is the busiest time of year because we're coming to a close of the school, uh, school year. Uh, I did want to identify the following, uh, upcoming events. The senior sports award night will be held at May 22nd at 7:00 PM in the high school auditorium. We will recognize all lettering seniors, academic all-conference and WIAA student athlete winners. The public is invited to attend that event. Uh, Marshfield Middle School will be holding a ribbon cutting ceremony for their literacy garden. Um, Mike Nixnick and his staff have put in a tremendous amount of work, um, to pull off that project. I know that event is intended to recognize, uh, donors and, and the public is invited to attend that event as well, Friday, May 24th at 2:00 PM, uh, at the literacy garden at the middle school. Project Search graduation will be held on Friday, uh, May 24th at 11:00 AM, and that will be held at the Marshfield Medical Center. The alternate or alternative, uh, school graduation ceremony will be held on Wednesday, May 29th at 11:00 AM. And, uh, Mr. David Ragland, I believe that's gonna be held right at the YMCA where the school is, is located this year, is that correct?
That's right.
At the YMCA. Um, the Marshfield High School Scholarship Program will be held on Wednesday, May 29th at 7:00 PM in the high school auditorium. Uh, friends and family are welcome to attend. That is open to the public as well. And then finally, uh, but certainly not least, our high school graduation ceremony for Marshfield Senior High will be, um, Sunday, June 2nd at 11:00 AM in the Marshfield Senior High, um, Boson Company Fieldhouse. Uh, again, we're very much looking forward to that graduation ceremony for the class 2019.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is a busy one. Um, we will move on to some donation district and, I'm sorry, it's, I'm pushing it and it's not coming.
I've got a mistake here if you wanna remind Frances.
My finger is not doing it. Okay, sorry about that. Um, we have a number of gifts that the board may consider for acceptance. The first one is a hundred dollars from Fisher Landscaping for the Sixth Grade Leadership Day at Wildwood Zoo in May. Um, a 1999 Ford Expedition valued at a thousand dollars for the high school automotive program from Gordy Burr. Uh, plastic report covers valued at a hundred and fifty dollars from Kevin Creason. Uh, Marshfield Athletic Complex donations in the amount of a thousand dollars each from Marley Boson, Roberta Deveder, in recognition of Mary Oosley, Amber Kiggins Life Height, Joan Chong, Kim Zimbo, and Anonymous. So, um, thank you. And, uh, Lincoln Elementary has a number of gifts. Twenty dollars from Judith Gadkey, 200 from Hyun Nujin, Uyun, toys for the school store valued at eighty dollars from Eric Bennett, and 4,203.35 from Cornerstone Community Church. What is your pleasure?
To accept with great things.
And a second?
Second.
Second, I say. Okay. So we have a motion to accept with great things and we'll go ahead and take the vote.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes, always.
Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Okay, then we will move on to finance committee, Mark, which is like to.
Okay.
Dale.
Give me just a second, I gotta back up on my computer here. Okay, here we go. First of all, we had the presentation of monthly bills that includes, uh, all the checks basically that are written from, for everything, from teacher requests and supplies, everything basically in the district. So that was, uh, presented to us by, uh, Mr. Sauserman. Uh, and then we had a presentation of a food service budget. We'll have an item coming up in another agenda regarding, uh, school lunch prices, so I will wait on that, but we also had, uh, some good news there. There's been an increase in the number of students who are, are taking the, uh, daily meals in our school district. And we also had a chance to look at, in the next item, presentation of human resources budget, taking a look at items. There's a five-year plan in which that department looked at replacement items and I think, uh, top near the list is a new milk cooler and, uh, forgot, there were a couple of other items, I could look them up on here, but a couple of other just general replacement items. I think the point I wanna make here is that, once again, just as we do in maintenance, we have a five-year replacement plan, so these things are, are looked at and of course, unless there's some sort of an emergency somewhere along the line that has to be dealt with. So, that was presented to us as well. Human resources budget was also presented and there were some, uh, software, um, purchases that needed to be made and, uh, last year that now we are more into a maintenance and licensing and there was quite a savings over last year in our human resource sources budget to, in that area, twenty some thousand dollars alone. So that, uh, budget is coming, uh, under budget of almost thirty-nine thousand dollars roughly for this next year. Nicole, correct on that? So those are, anytime we see decreases in things, that's always a good news. Discussion of summer, did I go past the, uh, the increase in lunch prices? Yeah, I did, I jumped right past it. Discussion of school lunch prices. Um, in doing that, the price increase is recommended for the start of 2019-2020 school year. The price increase covers the costs of general inflation, food supplies, benefits and salaries. Now, it's important to know that, uh, there's a lot of control by the DPI here. They also require that all districts increase at least ten cents per year until our average meal cost matches the difference between the federal free and the federal paid lunch reimbursement rate. According to the Paid Lunch Equity Report, we are required to increase our average to two dollars and eighty cents, which is the reason for the suggested lunch price increase. This will be an action item tonight. And, uh, the basic increases include, uh, for breakfast, a five cent increase at the high school and middle school, otherwise breakfast for, uh, price, breakfast prices, there are no other changes for the elementary or for adult costs or the forty cent milk costs, that will remain the same. There has been an increase, a slight increase in the lunch cost, 355. has been an increase, a slight increase in the lunch cost, from $3.55 for adult to $3.75. It'll be part of the approval tonight. Reduced lunches, no change. Elementary goes up 10 cents, from $2.60 to $2.70. The high school, excuse me, the middle school goes from $2.75 to $80. And the high school goes from $2.90 to $3. We're looking at 10 cents increases in some of those categories. So on behalf of the finance committee tonight, I would approve the increases in school lunch, school lunch payments.
So we have a motion from the finance committee to approve the increases that Dale just gave us, because there were a number of them. And is there any discussion, any questions? Then we'll go ahead and take the roll.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Carnardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
And that's it.
Next item, we had a discussion of some summer school and extracurricular pay. There won't be any major changes involved there because the board approved some increases last year to help, well, to tell you the truth, try to push more people, especially in our own school district, for applying for some of those summer school positions that had already been accomplished last year. But that was also discussed quickly. Substitute pay, again, for teachers, was also addressed primarily in the last year's budget, if I'm not mistaken on that. And so that was just a matter of reporting out. There's not any major increases there. Next item involves some finances that could come into play with the building of the athletic field. It was recommended to us by our city utility department that we take a look at the electrical situation that we have on the west side of the school right now. Transformers, wiring, some of the lines into the school over there. I believe all of those at this time are owned by the district. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. But they're, what, 30 years? How many years on?
At least plus 40, probably.
Okay, okay. So this is kind of a forward-looking project where the utility committee said that if we put in a four-inch conduit located with the electrical work and the boxes being put in with the athletic fields, that although not needed right now, this is one of those things that you kind of look ahead a little bit and say, as long as we're digging up everything and dealing with the electrical work and so on, it would behoove us probably at this point to put in a four-inch conduit there that would allow us to add transformers and stuff that would replace, if that's my correct understanding, could replace some of the work that we have, some of the things that we have on the west side of the school district right now. That is still being discussed in terms of prices, who would do the work, and so on. But I think the finance committee has looked at this favorably, and we also discussed this with the facilities committee as well. And I think Mark and I are both on that committee. We talked about that it would be a good idea to be forward-looking again, should we have some major problem on the west side of the district. So we did have a report on that tonight as well. We have another item for approval. The Booster Bash is held every year to raise funds for the extracurricular and athletic programs at Marshfield School District. And one of the events that takes place every year is, oh, I don't know, for maybe six, seven years now, I think, five years or so, we've gone to a naming rights for the Marshfield Fieldhouse. In the past, it has been approved that the Bozen Company had received the winning bid. And once again, the Bozen Company bid $10,500 to have naming rights for our Marshfield Fieldhouse. And so on behalf of the finance committee, I would like to move that forward tonight to accept the amount of $10,500 from the Bozen Company for naming rights to the Marshfield Fieldhouse.
So the, we're approving the gift and the name?
No, just the one-year naming rights.
And so?
Just the one-year naming rights.
Just the one-year naming rights.
We're approving the one-year naming rights.
Right.
And that would name our fieldhouse, the Bozen Company Fieldhouse.
Correct.
And do we have any discussion or questions? Okay. Then we will go ahead and take the roll.
Dr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Carnardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
And not quite finally, but every, every, well, I shouldn't say every, but 25% of the school districts are 420, 50, 50 cents?
Four.
Okay, four, okay. School districts in the state, the Department of Public Instruction picks about 25% of schools every year to go through an annual, or to go through an audit. It wouldn't be an annual audit, but to go through an audit, check all of the enrollment figures. You know, the school district goes through an enrollment count at the end of September each year, and there's another one that takes place in January. But this is quite an extensive report that the school district was asked to put together, required to put together by the state, and just to look through all of the different groups of people that we have within our school, types of students, and so on. It's quite a lengthy report, put forward by the Hawkins Ash, our accounting service. And so I don't know if we have approval on that tonight, Pat. Do we have any approval there? No, it was just a, just a late discussion. It was informational only. And that report, full report, would be available here, I'm sure, at the central office. If somebody wants to read it, it's long, and it's very detailed. And the bottom line is, the school district came out of it very, very well, again, with all accountability in terms of all reports that have been submitted to the state. And besides that, we've got Tracy Doin, Ann Barlow, Erin Anderson are some of the people here that work on those things every year. And I would also like to congratulate them on the hard work that they put into all this in completing some of those reports and doing that kind of enrollment work throughout the school district. Finally, we had the monthly variance report, which tells us where we are each month in terms of expenditures out based upon last year. And once again, it comes down to 1% or less than 1%, I believe, in terms of a variance, in terms of where we were last year. So everything looked good in terms of our variance report. Nothing there that was dramatic in terms of differences over last year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. And I should have invited you to come sit here because I thought I'd pass you this gap.
No, no, no. Just throw it at me.
I do not want a chance missing.
Okay, so you have the curriculum report. Is that our next statement?
Yes. The curriculum committee met on April 24th. And the first thing on the agenda was we reviewed the mental health consortium planning status on where they are with all of that and all the meetings they've had and the things they're doing. And Chris Crowe, who is the principal director of North Star Academy in Cameron, Wisconsin, and the chair of the Coalition for Expanding School-Based Mental Health in Wisconsin, is the consultant that Tracy Kelts brought to the meeting. And the two of them gave us a presentation of all the things they've been doing to put in place, and some of the things that are still left to be done as far as how things would be financed and how referrals would be made and things like that. They also presented a draft memorandum of understanding and for the consortium. And so the new agreement was reviewed and we looked about. The goal is to approve those MOUs in June with the providers so that they, so that they will have them in July. So we would review them in June. They would be able to get them in July and get board approval in August so that everything's in place for next school year. Then we went on to look at the travel for all the competitions our kids are involved in, and those will come up later in the meeting, so I won't go into that right now. Then we also reviewed the family and consumer sciences curriculum, and you have that in board docs. And much like our business and information tech curriculum, you will see that it has a lot of connections with the community certifications that the kids can complete and, you know, prepare for. And then you can take a note in the syllabi. There's the budget page. But when you look at the budget page, it has the text that they need for classroom text that Kim also in the consumer, or family and consumer sciences department gave us a little overview of some of the items that they use. I mean, they use all these things like, you know, stoves and all the equipment. And Dale brought up asking about that, so that we were apprised of how they go about replacing those items when they, we're out. And so those are all budgeted, and you don't see that.
Actually, it's, for instance, it's under Family and Consumer Sciences Labs. It is on there.
Okay.
At the CNIA, I didn't think it was on there, but it's on there. So that totally includes refrigerator stalls.
All of that. Okay, good. And as I said, I think you'll find that in the syllabi, the second of those two documents in board docs. So if you have a chance to look at that and get back to anyone on the committee or Kim with any questions or information. And then we had an update by Mike Dravlo on our technology. And the new iPads are here. So the staff buses will be issued prior to summer, and the student iPads will be issued when they return to school. The displays, we have displays on carts for the flexible classrooms, and those have been evaluated. And they will replace those Promethean boards that, on the replacement cycle. The teacher sound systems, so these are the systems that they use, those are also being evaluated. For teachers who want to use them, the system is starting to become outdated and likely will be replaced with newer technology. And then we also, I'm going to skip over to Rural Virtual Academy recap. As you know, this was our first year to be an invested member, where we are kind of part of the group that has Rural Virtual Academy. It gives us a place at the table when decisions are made. And there were 48 students enrolled this year in the full-time coursework. And then we had 25 students enrolled in the District Connect RBA, which is more of a blended program. So they might be taking classes in our brick and mortar schools, but taking some online courses through RBA District Connect. And then overall, the enrollment in our RBA program is up about seven students overall. And we are down about 11 students who had previous, over the numbers that had previously enrolled out of our district into virtual schools. So we're bringing the numbers enrolling out down, which is a good thing. And we're bringing the numbers enrolling here up. Then I'm going to go back to the business and information tech curriculum. We presented it last month. And again, it just has an incredible opportunity for students to get certifications, to really make a lot of connections in the community.
Making them job-ready. I mean, that's what I couldn't get over. Excuse me. No, I'm just looking at this, two curriculums, both the family and consumer sciences curriculum as well as the business and information technology curriculum. I am blown away by how well we are doing. It appears to me, in preparing kids to have some skills available to get the job they need to get them through college or to do, I mean, it's just astounding. It's really, really outstanding.
Where we live on their own.
Yeah. And I would like to request if I could audit a few of the courses in the tech curriculum. I think my kids would really appreciate it. No, it's just, it's wonderful. And it's actually, obviously, there truly is knowledge that I feel like I need to gather.
And they get a lot of real-life experience.
Yeah.
You know, different places in the community, like Marshfield Clinic Information Services and CIS, et cetera, and they're actually in there learning.
Yeah, it's just so relevant and thorough. I'm so impressed with both of them.
So on behalf of the committee, I would like to ask the board to approve the business and information tech curriculum.
Okay, so before us tonight, with approval of the, or recommendation of the curriculum committee, looking to move forward with the family and, I'm sorry, the business and information technology curriculum. And we don't have to have another motion on that because it's on behalf of the committee.
Yes, it's on behalf of the committee.
What else do we need? Any further discussion? I guess I have to say that part too.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Carnardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Waller?
Yes.
And that's it. Thank you. Next, we have Facilities, Safety, and Transportation Committee, Mark.
Yes. And we did meet. First item of business was review of the summer project. We've reviewed it the month prior in finance. We discussed it here, the roofs. And then there's some work on the chiller up at the high school and the cooling tower that they're going to be working on. We moved into the athletic facilities update. Everything remains on budget and on schedule, with the expectations that the stadium will be completed and the baseball and softball fields will be seeded in August. Then the work, come this fall, we'll be studying the work up here at the middle school. And if you have seen the pitchers or been around there, you see that the bleachers are going in as we speak right now. So the students are working on the press box and the dugouts. That's come along well. They're working with donors to meet the deadlines. Students are working, I get Douglas, but they're working with the donors to meet the deadlines. Administration continues to meet weekly with all the contractors. So, and the proposal on the four-inch line, we have just discussed that with Dale. So I don't think there's any reason to get any further into that other than we do know that, I believe, next month there'll be a little bit more if things do proceed with that. So. School Forest Lodge, the bid process was completed a year ago. An account for the project has been established and includes money from timber sales and donors. Currently, the project budget is short, approximately $10,000 to $15,000. Fundraising efforts are going on as we speak, and hopefully we'll raise enough money that we can rebid this project. We had talked about the HSR study and the long-range facility needs. There's a lot of things that we've done already. Outside of the HSR study is part of like the athletic fields and everything. So we wanted to relook this, see where we are with the HSR study and where we want to go. Where is our future here? So we kind of discussed it with administration. Administration's going to take it on, take a look at it with the staff, where they're at right now, where they want to go. And they're going to bring back some suggestions to us so we can bring them forward to the rest of the board. But the long-range study is a very good item. As we said here, we wrapped up with the last one a couple of years ago as we finished up with the middle school. And that was the long-range study. That's where Washington and Madison had come in. So now looking at this long-range study now and seeing where we're going to, where we need to go and getting it set in its basis. So that's about all we had.
I have a question about the school forest. You mentioned the shortfall and being able to do the updates there. So who is spearheading the fundraising for that, do you know?
Mark, can you help me with that?
Absolutely. I know Mr. Z, Mark Zee, is the school forest coordinator.
Oh, okay.
He's the, Mr. Zee, he's kind of...
Okay. This is the first I'd heard of it, so I thought I'd ask it. So everyone's aware of that. Okay. On the conduit that was mentioned, possibly going along the athletic or the stadium, I assume, is it fair to say that expenses much is small compared to the down-the-rung expense where we replace the wiring and transformers and all?
Oh, absolutely.
And it would just be less expensive to do that now to get it laid while the ground is turned over?
Yes. But this, this is, they're coming in along the parking lot right now, going to be sent a transformer. This is, this could be a future extension coming around to help feed the high school. Right now, we've got primary back... Right now, we've got primary back there and the transformers that the school system owns. If something would happen, this gives us and the power company an alternate route to repeat everything. Plus, in the future, as we're looking forward to this, if we don't stay with the primary metering and we go with just the power company owning the transformers and the cables, it gives them a route to repeat everything, which is cheaper for us because we would have to pay for the extension anyways. So in the long run, if we got to pay for the extension, it's going to be quite a bit more than what it is right now because things are tore up. So if it can get put in now, now's the time to do it.
And I'm assuming it would also save time if anything did go wrong and they had to move quickly.
Yes.
Anything else, any more questions? Then we will go on to. I'm sorry. Policy. Then we go on to policy. And Karen, show them.
Apparently so. The oldest leader is not with us tonight again. All right, policy met. And the new business, we were attacking all the student handbook elementary middle and high school. We took the middle and high school first, and that's being presented later as action items because they have to go to print. Elementary is being brought forward as first readings today. They've been gone over with a fine tooth. Whoever did the table contents reworked this fabulous thing, by the way.
How about that?
It was very easy to read.
I thought it made sense.
Just, there is one thing I found when I was reviewing this, the items that are up for evaluation today. We did make a change in all three handbooks about, in the dress code, that head coverings may be approved for religious or medical reasons. And this is semantics, but it seems very significant to me. In the elementary and the high school handbook, it says, exceptions will be provided. And in the middle school, it says exceptions may be provided. I recommend or move that we actually make those all the same. I would go with the word may rather than will. I think most of the time in almost all cases, it would be approved. It kind of, it's not like a rule of law. You never know what could come forward. So that would be a friendly amendment to the motion letter, I suppose is how I would do that. Okay. So at the meeting, we were just going through those handbooks and making some changes and you guys have had them to review. We did have a good discussion on the policies related to cell phone use. Previous meeting, we had tasked the high school administration to get together sort of a task force group to get feedback about how the teachers feel about it, how the students feel about cell phone use. Is it a problem? Where are the problems? What are the recommendations? And the recommendations came back that we should probably consider revisions to the student handbook and crack down on the use of PCDs during instructional times effective this coming school year. We're working on the communication plan. We would like to get this new information in front of people early and often so everybody sort of can get used to the idea and it'll be disseminated. Can I go through the pertinent part of what the email had in it? We're just working on the wording of the updated policy. But as probably the most relevant language in the, in the big part that we're working at is PCD should be powered off and stored in students' lockers during educational times so the PCD is out of sight and not a distraction to any learner. The use of PCDs in the educational setting is strictly prohibited. This includes, but not limited to, prior to class starting and throughout the entire class period. Students who fail to follow the PCD expectations will be required to turn over the PCD to any MHS staff member or substitute. All complicated PCDs will be turned over to administration front office. And then there will be other caveats for ripping offenses, et cetera, et cetera. So the goal, there was a lot of discussion about how, that we already had a policy, but it wasn't being enforced. So I think we're mostly just beefing up language, trying to get education out that this is an important part of keeping distractions out of the educational environment. They'll be using it before school, after school, lunch hour, breaks, wherever, just from the time you hit the door to the time you leave the classroom. We want to minimize distractions. Leaving them in the lockers is sort of out of pocket, out of mind. If you just know you can't reach it, you know you don't have to think about it. So that, that's the intent, is to help refocus attention on what's going on in the classroom. And we are understanding that this is a bit of a culture shift and a paradigm shift. So we're hoping to be open to concerns, discussions as we go forward. That's why we wanted to bring it up today so that we can just let people know that this is coming down the line.
And we'll have a review in November. There'll be a review of the effectiveness of the policy in, in November was our first date that we thought.
We asked to bring it back while we had pulled out where the concerns are, where the problems are, you know, in November and do another presentation to the committee.
I have two-part question for you. One, this is what they have recommendations after, is what they would like to see in the schools.
There were some mixed staff because it was acknowledged that some staff actually used the cell phones. And it, yes, I can't even remember if there was a carved out, it's up to the teacher.
There were.
Jason was here.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry?
There were staff participants on the task force.
There were staff, yeah. It was staff and students, and this was sort of the consensus that they came to.
Can I question?
Yeah, staff and students, yeah.
If the teacher still chooses to want these in their classroom, are they allowed to have, let their students have their PCDs in their classroom? Because I know on the tech ed side, when we had a meeting here quite a while ago, big conversation between the teachers and the businesses in Marshfield was on, how do you want us to handle the cell phones? But I kind of come out of the end of the meeting was, the businesses were saying, we want the kids to use their cell phones for information highway. So I'm just kind of wondering, you know, if the teachers would like to have it in their classroom, especially on tech ed, if they want it, is it going to be allowed?
Well, I guess it would have to be determined whether that was part of the learning curriculum, if that's part of what is being taught and how to make that function, but I don't know.
Can you give an example of, of, of an instance in the, in the tech ed program in which the, if they're out on a site?
If they're working on something, that they can bring it up and have information, especially in the automotive van, I mean, it becomes a tool. You know, if I'm working on that 1999 Ford Explorer, I want to know something about the air cleaner. There it is. You know, and this is, this is where the businesses in Marshfield want these tools to be used, you know, as a tool, and they don't want to discourage it from the tool.
So these, these students are doing work like as part of an internship at a business? Is that?
Well, but what it was, was a meeting between the tech ed side here and the businesses of the surrounding area. It would give the teachers time to interact with the businesses to find out, what do you want us, different things to wait, do they want to teach, and how you want us to go with our students, you know, so that we can prepare them for the workforce.
I see, okay.
So.
So that's, because I think that, you know, part of our discussion in, in general was that we've provided a screen for every student in the district to gain that information. And so in terms of the educational setting at the school, we were suggesting that we already have a screen and there's just so many opportunities for distraction with the cell phone because there's less control over the cell phone, whereas we do have a screen opportunity and there's that opportunity for every student in the school, in the district with, with the iPads. So that's kind of the rationale behind it. If there is a specific situation in which, what, what I'm concerned about is that we're making sure that it's the internet access, it's getting that information regardless of the device. So those students certainly can gain the information that they need if businesses are saying, hey, we need to be coordinating to get the up-to-date spec on this engine that we're building or repairing. And I really, really know the language to say it in the tech ed world, but that, that type of thing is available through the iPad use.
Unless they are offsite somewhere away from wifi and it's more of this situation than we.
And it's not what you're talking about.
I'd like to see something there.
Yeah.
That if the teacher would like to have their cell phone in the classroom, that the teacher would go ahead and allow it. You know, I mean, I can understand the restriction, but if they want it, why not let them have it?
Well, that's the language that was present before, and that's sort of what we're reacting to because it became a problem. It has become a problem. So, so we were trying to eliminate that, that language so that there was a little bit, a little bit more teeth in, in the, in the policy so that we can gain some control. Because, and in the classroom, in, if you're talking about situations in the classroom, students have access to internet and can get all the information they need through, through the, the classroom, the, the district provided iPad. If they are doing an internship with a business that is offsite, that's not in a classroom. And whatever that business is, is doing to help the student learn the craft or the, or the skill or the, or the discipline of that business, if it requires the use of a cell phone while they're doing their internship with that, with that company, then that would certainly make sense.
There will need to be some wording because it says it is strictly prohibited in the educational setting, which could extend outside of the.
So if we need to tweak that to.
We can bring this back to committee this month and really work on the language.
Well, we need to also talk, I mean.
You need to have this.
Because we're printing, yeah, yeah.
This, yeah, we would like to have this printed. I mean, this.
Yeah.
This email version is not even what we thought committed last night.
Right.
It had been changed, so we'll have to bring it back to committee and try to hammer it. And if this turns to an action item tonight necessarily, I don't know.
Is, is the high school handbook, the high school handbook?
It's going into the high school handbook.
Yes. It is in, I, I'm looking at what we are going to have, and are we, aren't we not doing an action item? Yeah, that is an action item tonight. And I'm, I'm looking at that, and we do indeed have that language in it right now. Use of PCDs in the educational setting is strictly prohibited.
Correct.
We're going to be looking at it in the building. We don't, we don't extend it to.
Right. I think, I think we can, I, I, in the educational setting.
Is there an option for a teacher that really thought it was absolutely necessary within their, their, their class or their curriculum that they needed to use their phones?
Let's look at the following sentence. It says, this includes, but not limited to, prior to class starting throughout the entire class period.
Yeah, that means you're not allowed to use it for that.
That's implying the, 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 the classroom.
At educational setting, if we're to enforce that field trip, things like that, we would not be enforcing it in the educational setting.
Right, because internship is not a class period. I mean, I mean, well.
Is that okay?
Okay.
And if they came back and if there was a confusion, I'm sure it could come back to the board at any time and.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
It wouldn't be, you know.
That might be.
There probably is.
I believe the language will allow for what you're discussing.
Would allow rational decision making down the road, down the line. That's a good discussion to have.
I have to admit, I'm confused at this point as to whether we're going to allow them in a classroom or not allow them in the classroom, or what the exceptions will be for using them in a classroom or, or whatever. So I look forward to whatever further discussion you have.
No, we have to, we're, we're voting on this going. These have to go to print. So right now, it is, they're basically, they're to be out of sight and not a distraction to any learner in any classroom.
In the classroom.
That's how it's.
I have a free line. In the event of a bad situation going on in any of the schools and the cell phones are locked in their lockers, do we, does it put us up against any, any issues that we're not allowing them to communicate? And would that put us in any legalities?
That I brought up too, because it says should. PCDs should be powered off and stored in students' lockers. It says that they must be, and I think that need allowance for some kids whose parents really want them to have their phones at all times, to have them with them. They just cannot be seen, cannot be.
Right.
And Ryan, I don't know, do you want to speak to this?
That was the intent of writing.
I, I think the, the main question you're asking is, are there any legality issues, concerns or liabilities? I would say no, not, not in that situation. But as they're indicating, the committee members are indicating, we did talk in terms of, we're not going to, kids will still have them on their possession with the expectation that they're turned off and not being used.
And actually, if you are following the national discussion of safety and issues of safety in an emergency, such as unfortunately what was just, it just occurred in Colorado again. Safety experts suggest that actually student's cell phone use in immediate emergencies actually putting the student in a more dangerous situation because their attention is on the four-by-inch screen and talking to mom or dad, who really have no impact on the safety of the child at the time of the emergency. And it is best for the students to not be communicating with their families as they are trying to control the emergency situation. It's better for the students to, if, if they are in a situation of needing to know where to go, to get out of the way of, 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 out of harm's way, they need to be paying attention to this person that's speaking to them in their classroom and not using their cell phone to talk to mom and dad. The other example that I, that I, I read about was when students are exiting a building, if there is an emergency situation, they are supposed to have their hands up so that they are clearly not the one holding the gun. And it could be, this was a, a safety officer who suggested that, that the student's hand that isn't up there, that may be down here with a cell phone, could be misinterpreted as someone with, with a weapon. And so it's, you know, and I, you know, we had this situation recently, it was just this spring, and I was in Madison and I got the alert that there was a problem and, and there was a weapon near the high school. And that was, that was scary as all get out, but I sure as heck didn't want to be hearing from my son at that point. I wanted to make sure that at that emergency situation, that he was doing what he needed to do. And thank God, that was the case, that he was listening because he was supposed to head to, he had ninth period off, and he was headed to the very location of the weapon when the lockdown occurred. That was what, so, so I, I was really glad that he was paying close attention to what he needed to be doing because he would have walked right into the situation, you know, probably, you know, yards away from where the weapon was. So it's, it's important for us to really think about what, what we're doing with, with suggesting that our students should be calling mom and dad during an emergency situation.
Was there concern about anything else in the policy that was emailed to everybody? I think, I think the spirit of this is, we need to do, try something. We need to tighten up control. Hopefully, this will improve attention, performance. And we'd just like to see if it, if it helps diminish how much time some teachers are having to spend reorienting, redirecting kids and who are staring at their naval staff every so often. With the understanding of everybody needs access.
And it's a start. This is, this is just a start. We're going to see how it goes and, and we'll have evaluation, you know, about the rollout soon after the school year starts, as, as, as soon after we've implemented it.
And you had a lot of input.
We did.
A lot of input and disclosure. We're everything from, do we just have them drop them in the pouch when they walk in the school in the morning and don't look at them for the whole day? To just have them have free rein. We thought this was about right for this community and the culture of Marshfield right now as a little step forward. That was the big one. Future agenda, I understand we should all work through more policies. And then we will see the cell phone fallout and repercussions and benefits, hopefully again in November. So back to, I would like to, on behalf of the policy committee, ask for approval of the middle, do I do them separate or can we do them together?
Do you want to do them separately, especially with the other issue you brought up in the amendment?
The middle school student handbook. I bring that up on behalf of the committee.
We have a motion on the floor on behalf of the policy committee to approve the middle school handbook for 2019, 2020. And any discussion? I should have gotten these to you before now. I should have gotten these to you before now, but I did have a few things.
Okay.
And they're just editorial. Page 23, the bullying section. And this also is in the other two handbooks, so I'll just say it once. Got to turn them through. Okay. In the bullying section, in the red part, it says, "Bullying behavior rises to the level of harassment when the prohibited conduct is based upon the student's sex," and then in parentheses, "that includes transgender status, change of sex, gender identity, et cetera, then race, color, national origin, religion, creed, ancestry, marital or parental status." This is the section. Sexual orientation of physical, mental, emotional or learning disabilities. So I'm assuming that the three words, sexual orientation of, need to come out. Does that make sense?
We had actually edited that out. Thank you for finding that.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we refilled that.
We had removed that, and I thank you for finding that.
Okay. And it's in all three.
Yes, that was supposed to have been...
It's in the elementary, in the middle school, in the high school one, so all three need to be changed, just those three words.
Sexual orientation of.
Correct, because that's all addressed previously. So really, I'm assuming you just want comma, physical, mental, emotional or learning disability.
Exactly. We had taken that.
Okay, so that was in all three. And then, a couple pages later, on the locker policy, you added open and closed in a respectful manner, and all the other bullet points had the word locker in there, so I thought maybe it should say open and closed lockers in a respectful manner. And then it's consistent with the other bullet points. So it's kind of minor, but editorials, I said.
I have no problem with making that change.
And then, page 28, a couple pages later. Okay. This is on that personalized learning device thing, and this also, I think, is in all three of them. Where it says... Okay, the first paragraph under, in the red section, the last sentence, "Students will also develop the digital literacy and citizenship skills that are essential to graduate college and career readiness."
Be career-ready.
You could either put be, or you could just say essential for college and career readiness. Either way.
I think college and career readiness makes that better, better essential to college and career, essential for college and career readiness.
I am not finding where you are.
On page...
Page 28?
Page 28 of the handbook.
Yep.
First red paragraph.
And the first full paragraph, personalized learning devices, the last sentence of the first paragraph.
That's where I brought up the policy.
Were you right there?
All the lightning's there still in there.
Right. They're not all.
I did it in the elementary and I forgot.
Yes, I was going to say, they're gone from the elementary, but they're in the middle one, the high school one. So, anyway, and that's it. So the lightning is the only other one, and that's on page 29.
So what did you want the, let's do it, then, essential to...
Essential to college.
To college and career readiness.
Yep.
So take out graduate? Take out, essential to, take out graduate?
It's graduate, it's not graduate.
Graduate, yes.
I think it's implying that you graduate from our Marshfield High School.
Graduate, comma, and college and college and career readiness.
No, to graduate college, but we're going to back it up to, you're just ready to go to college.
To graduate, comma.
Essential to graduate, college and career ready.
College and career, okay, graduate, comma, college and career.
Makes sense the way it is.
Okay, just one thing also to clarify, is this wording, and I'm guessing is coming verbatim from the other handbook, correct?
Yes.
I think the skills are essential to graduate college and to me, be career-ready.
Too good. Well, we were saying to graduate high school. Is that not correct? We're referring to graduating from, to graduate high school.
College and career-ready.
That's how you want to graduate.
Oh, to graduate college and career-ready.
It's not wrong.
It's not really technically wrong in a way.
I think everyone is just reading it.
You could explain it a little further by saying, essential to graduate from the Marshfield schools.
I would say graduate from.
Graduate from Estam.
Yeah.
College and career-ready.
To graduate from high school.
And be college.
And be college and career-ready, how about that? Or with college and career readiness.
I'm happy with that.
Okay.
And that's the one that already says may, so I'm happy with that. All right. So with those amendments, I'm okay with those. Any other discussion about those?
So should we...
Should we vote on the middle school handbook?
Yes.
Kimmy?
Karen Church? We got... So technically, we could entertain a motion to amend.
You have the motion.
So I'm moving...
We already have that motion to amend?
With those amendments to...
That sounds fine.
Do we need to do a separate amendment motion?
No. No motion.
Okay.
Then, any other discussion? We'll go ahead and take the vote.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sidwala?
Yes.
I'd also like to bring forward on behalf of the Policy Committee, the high school student handbook for approval. My amendment to that would be to change the word will to may and under the...
Head cover.
Head cover, which apparently is in section... I know we found it in here somewhere.
Page 24.
On page 24.
Did you find more in there as well, Francis? Or just the ones that were the same in all of them?
Well, no, I have three others.
Was it on 25?
In the letter, at the beginning of the handbook, the second page, it's the last paragraph, just that first sentence, if you read that, I think it's supposed to be two or three sentences, not one.
The first sentence of the last paragraph.
We are proud to support.
Or to get rid of the word is. To ensure that all students in the high school are provided with high-quality instruction that is set in space and supported environment, ensuring the students' academic behavioral needs are not only met, but promote growth within the learning environment. It's a long sentence, I see.
Well, and also, I couldn't tell what the subject was for the is. Yeah, the is has to go in the...
That is definitely, yes, no. We're proud, it's like we're proud to support our students to ensure that all students in the high schools...
The MTSS framework, maybe period there.
Take out the is.
Proud to ensure, yeah, you're right, it's not like...
We are proud to support, to, comma, to ensure...
Can you quickly wordsmith that for us, Dr. Sidwala? Proud to support our students. These two have gifts.
The awkward thing is the MTSS framework and embedded in best practice are doing this or colliding with each other and being modifiers to the first part. I don't, I can put those together and say, we are proud to support our students through the MTSS framework.
So as to ensure...
Which is embedded in best practice to ensure that all students...
Right.
Which is embedded in best practice.
Or you could take out the embedded in best practice and try to introduce it in another sentence, because there's just too much going on there. I think if you take that out, it's going to be a much better sentence.
Take out embedded, yes, that would be great.
And then you still don't, and you still can't have is, because we are proud of...
You take out is.
We're proud to support our students in the MTSS framework to ensure that all students...
So as to ensure?
Take out the is.
Take out the is and the investment framework, so as to ensure that all students...
Or ensuring...
Or ensuring that all...
Ensuring that all students are provided with instruction that is set in space, and then it comes back to ensuring again.
How about we talk about a period?
Yeah.
By using those practices, we ensure that students' academic and behavioral needs are not only met. The growth is promoted within the learning environment.
Yeah, so end of the first sentence with a period after environment, and then you bring, you want to read what you said again, so Jenny can get it.
Where was it again? Where are we?
You're just going to put the best practice in the beginning of the next sentence. So using best practice.
Supporting environment.
Can I suggest that we...
Using best practices, we ensure that students' academic and behavioral needs are not only met.
Okay, good.
Do you have it?
But we also promote growth.
Are you just emailing?
Yeah, could we, I want to, we could just, this is just sort of grammatical churning, can we do that by email?
I can do that.
Coach is going to rework and email.
I just thought very long sentence.
I don't think we thought...
We had a whole lot that we were doing with these, and I totally, I just skimmed through that. I figured, this is why we have to have review.
And then, we will be losing Mr. Ragland, and his name is on there, so...
Oh, I thought that was happening.
And then the one other thing is page five. So we have...
Could just say TBA, or just remove it altogether.
I'm sorry.
Either put down TBA in place of his name, or take that reference out altogether.
Right. And then, on page five, so of the handbook, if you notice in the table of contents, a number of the items have asterisks, but there's no asterisks to tell us what those asterisks mean at the bottom of page five, but there is in the middle school handbook. It wasn't in the elementary or high school. So in the middle school handbook, at the bottom of the table of contents, the asterisk says, "See related school board policies."
Yeah, that's what it says for the harassment policy and the bullying policy, the asterisk.
Right, so I think we just need to...
The reason the asterisk is in the table of contents is because of the way the title is carried to the table of contents.
And it's, it is in the body of the...
In the book itself, the title of the section has an asterisk, which is described below in the body of the handbook.
We should remove the asterisk.
From the table of contents?
Just remove them from the table of contents, because they're all within the body of the handbook.
Right, but you don't know why they, there's an asterisk.
We should take it off of the table of contents.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We just took it out of the table of contents when you got that part, it would have an asterisk.
Yeah, we'll just move it from the table of contents, because it is noted in the body of it.
And the middle school still has that at the bottom, the see-related school board policy.
We'll either put a disclaimer at the bottom or...
That sounds fine.
Get rid of the asterisks.
Okay, that sounds good. That's it. And then, just the same things that we talked about in the middle school one.
Exactly. All right, so with those family amendments, do I move again that we, I'm asking for approval for the high school student handbook?
So we have a motion on the floor on behalf of the committee to approve the high school handbook with the changes that were discussed. Any other discussion? Then we'll go ahead and take the vote.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sidwala?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Sure, yes.
Mr. Steiner?
Yes.
Anything else, Karen? That's enough for us, isn't it? Then we will go on to employee relations.
Okay, we have more handbooks. Second reading tonight, so this will be for approval to approve on behalf of the Employee Relations Committee, which right now consists of myself and Sam Steiner, since Amber Lightbite was the chair. On behalf of our Employee Relations Committee, we would like to recommend the approval of the Substitute Staff Handbook. We'll get to that.
So we have a motion on behalf of the committee to approve the Substitute Teacher Handbook. Any questions, discussion? And we'll go ahead and take the Substitute Staff Handbook, I should say.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sidwala?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes. Okay, part two, approval of the Extended Duty Coach Advisor Summer School Other Appointed Staff Member Handbook. That's also over second reading, so that is an action item as well. So on behalf of our Public Relations, Employee Relations Committee, I would like to approve that handbook for those positions as listed on the agenda.
Thank you. So on behalf of the committee, we have a motion to approve the Extended Duty Coach Advisor Summer School and Other Appointed Staff Handbook. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and take the vote.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Sidwala?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Okay, Staff Evaluation Consultant Contract. This is a position that Dave Shepke has held with the district. And basically, I think what we're looking here is to renew his contract for the Staff Evaluation Consultant Contract. That involves future effectiveness training that we are mandated, basically, to have within our district. Want me to restate that?
No, I think it would just be worth noting that we...
Right.
So the one in Board Docs is from this current year, but you're, on behalf of the committee, you're asking us to approve the Staff Evaluation Consultant Contract for next year for 2019-2020.
Right, and this basically lists the duties that that consultant should perform.
Any discussion? Then we'll go ahead and take the vote.
Dr. Sidwala?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
It's not listed specifically here as an action item. Is the contract renewal for professional staff, is that considered an action item tonight?
It is, yes.
Okay, on behalf of our Employee Relations Committee, then, I would move forward with the approval of the contract renewal for all professional staff in our district.
So we have a motion to approve the 2019-2020 contract for professional staff. Any discussion? And seeing none, we'll take the vote.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Sidwala?
Yes.
That's all, folks.
Personnel report.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, you reminded me of that before, too. I was going to say that, I was going to say that tonight. Here we go.
These will require a motion.
Yes, they will. Okay, first of all, approval of resignations. Employee is Linda Hammond, Library and Media Specialist, and I would ask for the... Employee is Linda Hammond, Library Media Specialist, and I would ask for the approval, this would be on behalf of our committee as well.
You need to make a motion, because-
It's not on behalf of the committee.
It's not on behalf.
Okay, all right, because we had discussed that, all right, so I would make a motion that we accept the resignation of Linda Hammond, Library Media Specialist.
I second.
Is there a second?
I just did.
Any discussion? Then we'll go ahead and take the vote.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sidwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes. I would make a motion also for the approval of the contracts for Luke Bailey, Teacher Technology Education Instructor for the middle school, Jenna Walsh, Teacher Special Ed Specialized Program Coordinator at Madison School, and Jane Law, Counselor in the Alcohol and Other Drug Abuse Coordinator position. So I would make a motion to approve those.
Three, is there a second?
Sam's there.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take the vote.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sidwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
And finally, over, after an extensive interview process of a number of candidates, there was a position that's open, that is a position that was open at the high school for Assistant Principal, and I would come forward with the motion of approval of Jamie Felice as the Assistant Principal at the high school, who will be replacing Dave Reglin, who will be retiring.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Karen Schulman?
Second.
Is there any discussion? And we'll take the vote.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sidwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Moving right along.
Thank you.
Yep.
We're after nine o'clock time, and you said pizza would be coming.
I think it's going to have cranberries on top, I think Mark is going to supply that.
We will move on to new business. We have CISA V Annual Convention coming up May 16, 2019, and we are looking to see if there's anyone who would be going to represent us at the CISA V. Do I have a volunteer?
I can't get to portage by that time.
Even if someone is unable to attend, we just have to have a name.
We need to submit a representative, yeah, on behalf of the district.
So even if they can't attend?
We have to, yeah, we have to submit somebody.
Okay.
I'll do that, sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you so much. So, having with your gracious offer, putting your name in there, do I have a motion to appoint Sam Steiner as Representative to the CISA V Annual Convention on May 16? Thank you, Dale. Any second?
Second.
Second, okay.
Does that need to be a motion? I was kind of wondering about that.
Oh, no, what is this?
It's just an appointment.
So we don't have to do-
Then we'll, if there's a consensus, as long as we're all consensating, do the same on. Okay, thank you very much. Then we will go on to approval of the Open Enrollment Applications, and those are in Board Docs, and we have two different lists, one for students open enrolling into our district, and do I have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Thank you, Mark. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Dale. Any discussion? Then we'll go ahead and take the vote.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sidwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes. And then we have another list of those open enrolling out of the district.
Oh, that was just for the ins?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was just for the ins?
So they make it to the outs?
Okay.
I, I motion, I-
Moving to, approving to approve the open enrollments out of the district. And is there a second? Thank you, Mark. Any discussion? Then we'll go ahead and take the vote.
Dr. Sidwalla?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Okay. Then we have approval of resolution for 66.03 Consortium Agreements for Project Search Students, and I hope you had a chance to look at that. Do we have a motion concerning that? There are three different ones. Do we do them separate?
You can do them together.
They can do them all at once.
But why don't we combine them if someone wants to make a motion for all three? Thank you, Mark. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So the motion is approve the contracts for all three towns listed, which would be Nielsville, Spencer, and Stratford for the Project Search Students. Any discussion? Then we'll go ahead and take the vote.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Dr. Sidwalla?
Yeah.
Okay, then we have a number of trips, and this is always exciting to see all the things our students are involved in and go and compete in. And the first is travel to Scotland, England, and Ireland for the International Dairy Judging Trip and Associated Tours, and that's in June of this year. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Kajal.
Second.
And Sam, okay.
And Sam's second.
Then we'll go ahead and take the vote.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.